Can I approve, love you too?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion approved, all in favor. Aye. Now is the time for Danny McCollum to open the office.
We got all of little B in this place.
So you're gonna hold the Bible.
Yes.
Y'all think we can? Okay, yeah, raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. I'm gonna say aye, and you'll state your name. I'm gonna finish reading it when I get done, so help me God. Aye.
Danny McCollum.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So here we go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Next up on the agenda is the other thing on code enforcement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town commissioners, town leadership residents. My name is Mark Martinez. I am the code enforcement officer for the town of Benson. I have been serving in this position since September 16th of 2024. Included in the packet, you're gonna see a like a quasi quarterly code enforcement statistics. Currently, total number of cases opened between September 16th and December 31st reflects 187. The total number of cases abated were 115, which is a abatement rate of 61.5%. We have a total of 72 cases that I rolled over from last calendar year, and as of today's day, I have 18 more that I just opened up within the last two weeks. So that's a daily average of cases opened of 3.28. Daily average number of cases closed per day for that calendar year is 2.7. I have assessed two fees. One was waived and one is currently outstanding for nuisance abatement. I had a total number of 376 informational flyers that I delivered to residences' doorsteps for trash can policy, yard waste, limb removal, bulk waste, general information, to hopefully garner some attention as to what is allowed and what is not throughout the entire city. I in placed or placed 252 what we call door knockers. They're basically hang up on the doorknob or the mailbox for certain types of information garnering, whether it be, hey, you forgot your trash can, hey, we don't allow this, and so forth. I collected a total of 212 unpermitted signs throughout the entire municipality during that calendar year. I think I got their attention because this year alone, I've only been able to garner 12 signs so far up to today's date. The violations that I have listed in your packet are not all inclusive because I find myself not only just doing those ordinance, enforcing those ordinances, things that are actually listed by the letter of the law. People are now calling me for all kinds of things. I'm kinda like doing home visits for a couple of elderly people that just like to sit down and talk, so that takes up a little bit of my time, and I'm happy to do that. But I'm taking care of animals, roosters, birds running at large, assisting other agencies. I'm doing vehicle removals. I have done three removals for vehicles that were long-term standing in roadways, one in which I was able to assist the elderly resident actually get paid for her turning her vehicle into a salvage yard. Illegal dumping, which we have a problem with. As a matter of fact, yesterday, I assisted the sheriff's department out there on McLamb Tar Road. Somebody had dumped thousands of dollars of some e-cigarettes, and they had left them there, so I didn't know what to do with them. The sheriff's department was aware of it. They sent somebody out there to take some of my information and help me clean it up. Things with permitting, zoning, food trucks, the use of trailers as accessory grounds, and the list goes on and on and on. When I was hired, I was given five priorities to go ahead and take care of, and they were the junk abandoned vehicles, trash cans, bulk waste, public nuisance, and storage pods and containers. I have addressed all of those issues in some form or fashion. Some of them I have actually opened up cases on. But the big ones, like the storage pods, we only have two now currently within the town that actually have storage pods. One is long-term, that I've granted them 180 days as my discretion because they had a house fire, and that's where they're currently storing their belongings while they're getting their house back in order. And then, of course, the second one is within their 30-day window of having their pod there to store construction equipment, which is allowed by ordinance. And then, of course, a multitude of other issues that don't even relate to code enforcement. I appreciate my job, and I am glad to do it, and I do it in accordance, not just with the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law because I appreciate being able to be an ambassador of the town to the residents, and I'm hoping that I'm making a difference. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I can tell you, you are making a difference, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you representing the town like you've been doing. I know it's a job where it's give negativity and it's hard deal, but we've done it so far with grace and kindness, and that's what we want. That's what we want in our town. We want the town to be be a part of, be about. What can I do for you rather than just say no?
Yes, sir. Last note, I have a total of 16 whole-house nuisance abatements, and I have most of it in some fashion, shape, or form, or some stage of actually being abated. Some big ones are, you know, if you go to Market Street 205, North Market, you'll see that the house is being cleaned up. It has been like that for years. If you go to the corner of Johnson and Holmes, they have elected to go ahead and take my advice and clean up a lot of their trash. They've actually started painting the house. There's some other issues that we have to work through before I can actually, you know, close the case. But if you drive around town, you'll notice some of those houses actually have forward movement. And I took a simple approach as to not being heavy-handed, but to utilize encouragement and dispensing some minimal town resources to go ahead and help them and push them forward for that good progress that we need, and just to give some of the neighbors some relief from certain ice horses. And I will continue to do so.
Thank you, Mark. I think for him, this position, although it's been underneath planning for so long, there was not one dedicated person to it, and so he's come into this and made it his own, and he's done a wonderful job. And like he said, Dr. Reiner, he's very much working with the people, and he has that flexibility to do so, so it's worked out well.
Next is general contractor, HVAC, via results from El shakeville.
Good evening. We have received two bids so far on the community development center. The first one was the general contracting package, which includes your piping, your electrical, the new windows in the building, painting, new floor coverings. Throughout the, we had an alternate to install all new doors on the interior of the building, which I accepted. And what was it? It was a new shower unit for the Parks and Rec Department, so they can take theirs before they go on the job, they accept it. For the total of $699,500 was the total amount. And we only have one bidder on the project. I had two originally. We needed three, so I extended the bid for seven days, and one of them dropped out. Now, the $699,500 is underneath my estimate for the work itself by $215,000. I hope they're not watching.
Do y'all have any questions in regards to the El shake building or this? It'll just go in consent at the next meeting for y'all for proof. So now for time to ask him, you know, any questions you have on the El shake building by the fire department.
Run into any problems with asbestos?
That'll be coming up. I have a bid on the roofing, roof opening next week has been an issue that I have been dealing with is the original roof on that building is a buildup roof, which contains 15% of presalite, which is asbestos NFL material itself. I have asked the state fire marshal code enforcement officer to get back to me, and she provided some information which was vague at best. She could not answer my question directly, which was to tear down to the asphalt and go back over top of it with new tapered insulation to the roof drains on the corners and put a new TPO on top of it. So I'm asking the roofing contractors to provide to me two different quotes. One to complete the tear off and the replacement, and one to replace the insulation and the TPO.
Can we do this with the $1.8 million that we got, or?
Yes.
We can, and stay under with the roof and the HVAC?
Yes, I'm gonna explain the HVAC to you as well. So I did, we did bid on the HVAC system, which was removing the roof units and installing new roof units tying into the existing system. And we have two new offices. We're installing some new ductwork and grills. This includes all new flex off the main trunk lines, which are solid pipe, and all new register return grills, the whole shebang, and startup. And our lowest bid was chain and building services, 155,016, 0.64. My estimate for the HVAC was 256. So I'm $101,000 ahead on that as well. Now, I am gonna add an alternate or a change order once I finish the contract with J and M to do some duct cleaning. Part of the building itself, some of the ductwork has not been used in some time. So I thought I'd prudent just go ahead and have a duct cleaning contractor come and clean out all the ductwork in the building before we start to get us back up again.
I got a question. This is just from my knowledge.
Sure.
Like the heat and air contractors, are we verifying they got the correct license for the amount of tonnage?
Yes.
Everyone on the A2?
Mm-hmm, yes. Biggest unit we have on the roof right now is a 20 ton. The biggest unit we have on the roof is a 20 ton, and he's licensed for that.
Most of the contractors that we use, they have to provide you with proof of license and also
liability insurance.
Liability.
Yes, sir.
Insurance. We're sure that we're good there.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I developed the contracts today, actually myself.
If everything works like it should work, and we get the roof and everything, what are we expecting time-wise?
I am shooting for September, the end of September of this year to have everything complete.
Of this year?
Yes, sir. I, the roof will only take probably three weeks. And the general contracting package is, majority of the work is gonna take them some time. I need to sit down with the representative from ACH Constructors, work out a working schedule for him that he is comfortable with. But I'm, my goal is to get it done by September of this year.
Well, I hope the roof works out for you, I really do.
I do too, but I will be honest, I don't think I covered enough for it.
Uh-huh, I don't because I just saw one come up over here done that the allowance is handling, and it's gonna be another $200,000 to put a roof on an old school.
Mm-hmm. I believe it. And with the monies I've saved so far of these two contracts, I get a feeling I may expend it to finish the roof, which in hindsight, we need to do, we need to do it properly.
We'll hope for the best.
Thank you. If you're not busy, you can come over and grab a paper.
No, thank you.
I guess not. Any other questions on the building area? I have the roofing bid opening next week, and I figure it's gonna go well, but we'll get the contracts and hopefully start within the next month or so.
Okay. Thank you, General.
You're welcome.
Next is Ike with the main and code ordinances. I'll get him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've got a proposed set of revisions. This is the full chapter work there, just the alcohol ordinance and the town of Benson. Most of it's not changed. There's some things that are removed, and there's some things that are added. Start at the beginning, remove the sort of complicated and confusing language about periods of time that the alcohol sales were allowed, and just set that as per general statute. And then also added in, this was sort of made for us to apply this coming for you now, is a request that there be a period of time to sell alcohol in the mornings on Sunday, mentor put the brunch bill that passed a few years ago. So as it reads now, that alcohol sales permitted as provided in general statute ATB 1004, and establishment licensed by ABC with a permit issued under ATB 1001 is rent itself on Thursday, is allowed by its permit on Sundays beginning at 10:00 a.m. That's one of the big changes that's in this proposed, these revisions to 112. There's also, we're on the second page, or if you look at it, it's under 11202. Not per standard contract revision, this chapter of revisions in this section is going to be applicable to any streets sidewalks located in a social district. That's a needed amendment that you got in there as we do now have a social district in town. That social district and the serving of alcohol in an open area like that on a public right-of-way, an alley in that case, would not be consistent with what you have already in the ordinance in 112. So we've made that revision as well. Add in some additional definitional terms, mixed beverage and alcohol beverages. The old ordinance just had definitions for malt beverage, open container, public street, number 451. And didn't see it in the current 112 as codified. So again, I've added in subsection E under 11203, which does allow for alcohol beverage sales upon permit and permission from the town at a town-sponsored or approved event. New Year's events, things like that on public right-of-way, public property. There's a procedure they have to go through, an application, the town manager has to look at that. They have to have licenses, ram shop liability insurance and so forth. That revision, I'd actually drafted several years ago. I don't see where that was ever passed however, so I put that in there too. So although, those are the changes. It's not what I would call it, total sweeping change of all of your alcohol ordinances. The rest of it remains the same, but it does add the, sorry? Oh, sorry, buddy. It does add the brunch bill hours on Sunday morning. It does provide for the social district, which you've already passed last year, and it does provide also for permitted alcohol sales on public property, right-of-way, closed streets, and things, special events based on the town-granted permission. So again, this is the new way we're doing. I'm not asking you to approve that right now. If there's questions about it, we can discuss now, or contact me or the staff. We can meet, talk about it next meeting, but that would be, I guess, what we'd be talking about in passing now, or this.
I'm gonna ask you a question. They can start selling at 10 o'clock in the morning.
That's what the brunch bill allows. When they passed that, I think two years ago, they allow for brunch hour sales on Sunday. You can already sell those hours during the week, it's just on Sunday. Municipalities can limit that, limit Sunday sales altogether, limit them to a later in the day. If they want to allow it before noon, they have to, you have to affirmatively put that in your ordinance. And it's only for places that serve beverages for consumption, breweries, restaurants, things like that. Get you a glass of champagne if you're, um, please. Is it 17?
Twenty seventeen. It's been like that since 20, brunch bill was passed in 2017.
Twenty seventeen.
Did General Assembly change? I didn't know if that was.
But it has to be a restaurant venue, and food trucks count as that?
Food trucks, I don't know that they can sell, yeah, I don't think they can sell. They would have to have a very unique setup to be able to sell alcohol.
Who is set up right now that serves food and alcohol besides the food trucks that come in?
We have.
Food trucks should sell food, and alcohol has to be sold through like a permanent place.
I understand that, but my question is, you said it has to be a restaurant. You are saying that the food trucks in their parking lot at the Faint and Goat would be a restaurant venue. They could sell.
They could. I think Faint and Goat would be able to sell, as long as that was, they had the permit from ABC. If you pass that, they would, Faint and Goat would be able to sell beer. The food trucks couldn't. I don't, well, again, I don't know all the legality to that, to be honest with you. I don't think food trucks can get a permit like that. Doing they did, and they can.
I'm saying food trucks selling alcohol.
Okay.
I'm saying the restaurant.
So.
From what you're asking right here, a brunch, okay? Is a brunch considered, they are serving, they are making and serving the food out of the restaurant along with the drink?
Yeah, no, I think they could sell at 10:00. Yeah. Faint and Goat could.
Sell at 10:00.
At 10:00.
Okay, using their food trucks.
No, they can sell at 10:00 because their permit would allow it.
Yeah.
What are they cooking? What are they cooking inside that building?
I don't know that.
Yeah, no, no, let me back up, correct myself there. You don't have to, I mean, an establishment, you can't, I mean, a bar could sell at 10:00 a.m. I guess, even if they just sold alcohol. If that answers your question. Any one of the ABC, valid ABC.
I didn't think it was like that, but it does. So we pass this, I can go down on Sunday morning, get me a beer before I go to church.
You can convince them to open. Because they'll be open at 10:00.
I just wanted to be sure on the.
What time y'all open on Sundays, Mr. G? 1:00. I don't think people are opening here.
I've used, I've used now the church. All right.
Any feedback, you call me, email, near staff, after the meeting, discuss changes or any more of that.
And again, if there's none other questions, this will be in consent at the 23rd meeting.
Well, I might have a question about that 10:00. I just think we need to honor the churches' support then. So, I mean, I have respect laws, I don't know what the council law is. I think 10:00 is being very disrespectful.
Social district has its own, it's more. So the social district has its own, y'all have a separate ordinance for that. So the social district would not be able to open until 1:00. So you would at least not have, you know, you wouldn't have that situation.
Fixed on the agenda, Benson, Johnson, and Fox, please agree.
I'm actually gonna let Kayla take this over. She's had multiple conversations leading up to today. So, and I think she sent, passed out a handout for everyone prior to the meeting. I did. So since our last meeting, we did have some wonderful conversation with VFA chairs, VFA board members. Up to yesterday, we did a final walkthrough at town hall to ensure all of us were on the same sheet of music regarding things that both of us wanted to see in this agreement moving forward. The sheet in front of you is just based on previous conversations we, the board, have had about what you wanted to see in this agreement. Those are the key takeaways. During our conversation and meeting yesterday with the VFA members, they did indicate they are in agreeance with what we have proposed. Kim and I, we are happy with these. So if it is the pleasure of the board, after we discuss and have any questions, we are going to shoot this over to Ike. He's gonna draft the final agreement, get it over to Mr. Hampton, and we can get it on the consent agenda next week.
That sounds good.
If you guys would like to just read the terms, if not, I can summarize whatever you would prefer.
Yeah, I would like to just read it.
I can figure out my keys.
Would they like to address the board?
So access, VFA will have either a board member or a designated for each show on property as the key holder at all times when VFA is in the building. So there will not be mass copies of keys given to mass VFA volunteers and members.
They could be VFA members, dancers, singers, actors, lights, dressable.
Loretta's a dancer.
You know, they all say it probably.
As Kayla said, we've had three or four meetings since this came about. Both groups want to work out in this agreement. I think we're very close to the terms, we're probably a few things to act on, and some legal stuff. But in principle, we're on board. We just want to get back in. Hope the town realizes how lucky we are to have a group this good for arts. I mean, they have spent a ton of money over there themselves, they want to continue to do it. And if we had to fund this, the town, we couldn't afford it. So, but we got, I think everybody recognizes it's something that we need to keep. I think we're gonna be able to do that with what we're working on.
Does anybody have any questions? If it pleases the board, can we go ahead and shoot this to Ike and have him draft the agreement, get with him, and then put it on consent for the next meeting? Thank you very much. Oh, can we, I know last time we asked, we wanted to hold off and not give a key. There's a lot of pleading and work that needs to be done in the auditorium. If it pleases the board, can we give Anita one key to hold very dear until this agreement is officially signed so that they can start getting people in and cleaning up?
True, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I think you've got an identity already in place in case there was an accident or something. I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
This, the revocation pulling, this is like the original, isn't it?
Yeah, so Loretta found all of, and that one was the actual pamphlet, wasn't it? The reverse?
Yes.
It was the original art stock pamphlet for.
I recognize Mr. Ron, and I'm like, oh.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So last on our agenda is the Kempa rate, the new district of 7000.
No, we've been going at such a great pace. So I had my rate committee meeting this last week. And as y'all know from past, rate committee's like once a quarter, and then it has to go to the commission, which is next Wednesday. And I really want to have just the thoughts on the board. The vote last Wednesday was just based on the number of people that were there. There were only 10 of us there out of 16. And the vote was very much, if it had have been a weighted vote, like next week is gonna be, it would have been very close to a 50-50. So I really want to know where y'all sit, so I know what side to vote on. A lot of the smaller cities were kind of thinking like I was, the bigger cities were thinking on the opposite end. So I'm just gonna kind of run up your gives. So you all are aware that in July of this year, our debt goes away. So currently, our debt is right at eight, it's roughly about $24,000. That will go away in our Nekempa bill and our wholesale bills. And that's gonna free up in the debt reserve fund $18 million. And I, if y'all have the packet that I sent to y'all, it's also in your board packet. I'm just going through the 77-page presentation that we had at the rate committee meeting. What the allocation for Benson B is $118,000. That's it. So what they talked about was there's gone, electricity is still on that realm of their capital, where they want to be is still low. So think about in our sense, fund balance. We want our fund balance to be a certain percentage. That's what they call their capital fund, and they want it to be at a certain place. And for them, it's still lower than what they want it to be. So kind of the explanation we got was they're still gonna have to obtain some sort of funding to help bring their capital up. So with the debt service payment falling off, they're gonna lose that money every month, essentially, because all 32 of us are not gonna be paying that debt anymore. If ours was $25,000, think of. because all thirty-two of us are not gonna be paying that debt anymore. And if ours was twenty-five thousand, think of what the bigger cities were. Um, they also were able to give us a estimate as of now where we are with the true-up for twenty-twenty-four. Currently, they're thirty million dollars short. So again, this is the third year that it's been a, a huge number where the true-up is. We won't know for sure what the true-up's gonna be until our September rate committee meeting. Um, and we asked Roy how confident you were with thirty million dollars being kind of where the number is gonna land, and he said not very. So to me, that says that number's probably gonna change. Um, so we're already looking at a twenty-twenty-four true-up. So with that, they are telling us, they, they gave us three options, and this is kind of where I need to know where everybody kind of lays. Option one is we pay for a hundred and eighteen thousand, they pay us out what our debt is, but they're going to increase our rate, our wholesale rate by six and a half percent. And that will go effective July one of twenty-twenty-five. All these will be effective July one of twenty-twenty-five. And then, um, they're saying plan four in year twenty-twenty-six, another three percent wholesale rate. Option two is you take that hundred and eighteen thousand that we should get back. They apply it to your twenty-twenty-four rider over a twelve-month period. So we don't get the money and it applies towards the rider. It'll help us with ri, with the next rider that's gonna follow on us. They'll increase the rate five and a half percent and plan for in twenty-twenty-six, a three and a half percent increase. Or we go with option three and we take the hundred and eighteen thousand that's due to us. It, it applies to the rider twenty-twenty-four over a twenty-four-month period, which if y'all recall, that's how we did the last two riders, was we split it over a twenty-four-month period, and they'll increase the wholesale rate by three and a half percent. So those are your three options. So, and kind of the way we were, so I sit beside Clayton and I sit beside Bellhaven. And Clayton's not small, but the thought process is we want our, we want to go ahead and get our money from the debt refund. We're gonna have to increase the fee no matter what. I mean, no matter the way you swing it, they're telling us from, they're, they're gonna increase our wholesale by three and a half percent now. Um, but the bigger cities didn't want to do that, and that's kind of where we're gonna lie next week, because next week is a weighted vote. So the bigger cities, Greenville, Rocky Mount, Apex, they have a lot more leverage than we do in regards to our percentage of vote. Um, so I just needed to know what y'all's thoughts were.
So in the last twelve months, we have had two increases passed on to us.
Yes.
That amounts to twenty thousand dollars.
Roughly a month.
Twenty thousand a month, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and our next one is supposed to come up, uh, our next increase was supposed to come up in January, December?
No, so the, so the twenty-twenty-four true-up.
Yeah, true-up.
We will not have a number, they're telling us we won't have a number until April, September timeframe. So, but they're telling me right now that it's already thirty million dollars under shot. So you're looking at another, so the last one was, see, the twenty, twenty-twenty-one was like a forty thousand dollar rider, so that's, that was the ten thousand dollars a month. So you're looking at another ten thousand dollars a month that's gonna get added to us on top of a wholesale increase, which is, would be the six and a half to five and a half or three and a half percent.
Well, to me, I've always heard it wants a tax, always a tax. You give somebody something and they'll find a way to keep it when, and that's exactly how I feel about Electric Cities. And Roy sat right up here and talked to us one hour, and he still didn't really tell us anything except this is operating expenses and we were so far behind. Looks to me like, um, we're paying some, some big salaries, and all we can do, I said, how do we get out of it?
You can't.
We can't get out of it. And I've even gone out and talked with, um, some other electrical suppliers. Why can't South River come in and buy us so we can be more like them? And that can't happen either. That's against the laws that, that they have. I don't know what to tell you. I, I mean, as, as far as this catch twenty-two, uh, e- everything is increasing across the board, and there's no way, I mean, you can't say, well, we won't pay it because we have to pay it.
Correct.
We're looking at it, we're, we're looking at, right now, we pay them twenty thousand dollars a month right off the top. So we've got to go to the people that buy electricity from us and pass that on to them. And now we're gonna get hit with another ten thousand, so it's gonna probably be right around thirty thousand a month that we're gonna send Electric Cities, and they still will have a three percent increase?
Yes, sir.
Or a five percent or a seven percent increase. What will keep them if we say, okay, we're gonna do this and we're gonna go with a three percent increase? What keeps them from coming up next year and say, you know, three percent's just not enough. We're gonna have to go to that seven percent?
Well, and, and keep in mind with option three, and I'll tell you, the bigger cities are looking at option three. The bigger cities are looking at a three and a half percent increase.
The bigger cities have industry.
I understand, I understand that, but I'm telling you, that's probably where the vote is gonna swing. And they're saying they, they would rather put the money that they're gonna get from the debt falling off to put that towards the rider and to bring that down, essentially.
So, so it's not every town has the choice, the rechoices.
We do not have, no, it is.
We all gonna vote every.
How, how do you want, what do you want my vote to be? And, and my vote can be, I mean, and, and truly, this is how you go back to your constituents and say, we voted this way. And so that's what I want to make sure is we are voting in the mindset that we are trying, we're, 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 there's an increase no matter where, the way you put it, but what is that increase gonna look like?
When you say it was fifty-fifty, well, kind of, but you didn't have everybody there.
We didn't have everybody there.
The big votes are coming, but in that fifty-fifty, the smaller towns were kind of like us. We need what we can get, and the bigger towns are, I'll go ahead and take, it's not a hundred and eighteen thousand to them. It may be three hundred thousand to the bigger cities that, hey, go ahead and take this money?
Yes.
Or is everybody looking at a hundred and eighteen thousand?
So Greenville, let's use Greenville, because that's the biggest one we got, right? That's the biggest player. Um, their debt allocation is three point six million. But now keep in mind, and I can go back and pull it, their rider was a lot bigger than ours too. Um, so they, they are saying we want to use our three point six that we're supposed to get back from the debt service, put it towards rider twenty-twenty-four and only re, only increase our wholesale rate by three and a half percent.
So you're telling me they're, they were supposed to get back three point six billion, and we're supposed to get back a hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yes, sir. And if y'all have that packet, that's on page four.
Yeah.
Of your packet. I, I highlighted Benson, but you can see what like Rocky Mount gets three point three million. Um, but like Clayton gets a hundred and one thousand. So like, when you, when I say they're not really a small city when you look at them, but is in regards to Electric Cities, they're small. But now also keep in mind like two, and this is kind of where we're coming from, um, me, I sat, Ann Ganim is who's on the rate committee with Clayton. She's their finance writer. And so you look at the options too for, for further out. So if we go with option one, yes, we have a, a six point five percent increase in July on the wholesale side, but we have a three percent increase potentially in twenty-twenty-six. If you go with option three, you have a three and a half percent increase in twenty-twenty-five, but you have a four and a half percent increase in twenty-twenty-six. So no matter the way you swing it, they're gonna get the increase. It's just when is that increase gonna happen? So I voted option one, just for clarity, at the rate committee meeting. But I want to make sure that I'm voting the way y'all want me to vote next week.
So Johnson, Ham, and Benson, I don't, I'm gonna go first.
I'm serious.
I'm beginning to wonder what people are gonna do. I really am, because if they don't make some changes with that Johnson, Ham, and Tag stuff, and plus increases in our's hand, y'all, we, we in trouble. So I don't know what the answer is.
Well, everything we, everything we have done in the last twelve months has been an increase. And we are fixing to get another increase, and we can pass this on. The only thing we, that I really want us as a board to look at is go back and see our own utilities because we can control those. We can't give it away. But if there's any way that we can compare last year with this year, year-to-date, and say, hey, we're up on water and sewer in collections fifty percent. If we can give our consumers that have to buy from us inside and outside a break on this, I didn't want to, and I, I, I voted for it, but I didn't want to vote for all of it at one time. And, and then we get hit with our new tax, uh, evaluation, and everything I have got is up over fifty percent. And I keep saying, how are the people that, I mean, I am lucky that I can afford right now, but seventy percent of the people around Benson can't afford this, and all we're doing, all they look at is, hey, you're gonna have another increase on air bill for utilities. And we can say all we want to, hey, we can't do anything about it. It's passed on to us. Well, if I was sitting out there, that just wouldn't be good enough. And I, I know that's what we're gonna do. Whatever we can control with this town, I would like us to see if we can. We can't break even off infrastructure and utilities. But if we can give a break here and there and whatever to see that, I, I mean, I'm having them coming out of the woodwork. Will, we can't afford this. I said, look, nobody can, and the county's gonna adjust the tax rate. But the town, county cannot adjust the tax rate to save me six thousand dollars every year on what I have. And, and I, I don't know. I, I, I just, it, like I said, it's a catch, this is a catch twenty-two. They're gonna get it, and we're gonna have to pass it on. And I know air utilities from a Latin corner water and sewer, we're doing everything we possibly can to give all of our customers the very best that we can. But if we can do it any cheaper, nobody else will. Now, the county is gonna try to lower, they're, they're getting hit from all directions with the, the taxes. They will give some adjustments, but whatever adjustments they give, your taxes are gonna go up. I don't care if you live in Johnson County, they're gonna go up. And I was, I listened to one of their, uh, meetings, and I, I couldn't hardly believe this, that the property that is gonna go up the most in Johnson County, what would you think that, I figured it would be Clayton? It's Bentonville. Bentonville's taking a, a, a one hundred and ten percent increase in their taxes.
Yeah.
I can't even imagine.
We have a lot of foreign land in ours, our, I was just telling them earlier, like.
Yeah.
All of our foreign land is what went up.
And, and I really don't know what it's based off of. You go through and Clayton, say Clayton can't afford to go up because they have got more industry and more things going on. If a bad road community doesn't have something to support it on the tax-wise, then their taxes are gonna go up. And, and I think they need to, to look at Benson, this side of the, the Deuce River, a little different than, than they look at the other. But I, I know the county won't do that. But anyway, uh, I don't have a problem with giving it back. We're not gonna see it anyway.
So option one. Can you repeat option one again? So option one is we would receive the hundred and eighteen thousand, but they're gonna go up on our wholesale bill by six and a half percent, and then project twenty-twenty-six by three percent. And then we would have to pay full for the rider twenty-twenty-four, which we don't know what it is yet, but let's estimate it's ten thousand dollars a month. So which, which last time was like five dollars per customer. We would have, no, we would pay our, um, well, we would, we would pay it, well, it says a single payment, so.
It would be paid in full?
Yeah, yeah, it would be paid in full.
And that's optional.
That's optional.
See, we would be applying our one hundred and eighteen thousand.
In option, no, option one, we would get our hundred and eighty, go back, yeah.
Would you use that hundred and eighteen thousand for?
Two, we, we would probably use it to pay that, some of it, yeah, yeah. Option two, you use the hundred and eighteen over a twelve-month period to help with the rider. And they increase our wholesale five and a half percent and plan in twenty-twenty-six a three and a half percent increase. And then option three, use the hundred and eighteen thousand over a twenty-four-month period to help with the rider. And it would go up three and a half percent in twenty-twenty-five, and then plan for twenty-twenty-six a four and a half percent increase. So basically what they do is they take the, the top number, it goes down, the bottom goes up, so it's neat eventually.
So option one, six percent increase of start.
Six and a half.
And then a three percent.
A three, it's six, it's twenty-twenty-six.
That's on a ten, and the rest of them's, uh, eight.
No, the rest, no, it's five and a half, three and a half.
Well, that's nine, and then that's seven, that's eight, yes, I mean, it's still.
And, and whatever it is, it's, it's due.
Yes.
It's due in six months. I don't care what option you go with.
Now, yes, the overall option three is less.
Right.
Percentage. But keep in mind, in twenty-twenty-six is an estimated number, so we'll have a whole nother rate committee dedicated to twenty-twenty-six. But right now, they're estimating, yes, it would be less as a whole.
I don't know which is better. I can, I can tell you, it's not gonna be less. It's probably gonna be more.
Again, I don't know.
Well, it looks like many of the options are going to give you higher rate, like you gotta get a higher rate because of the penalties and pay out that money, that can't like get yourself.
Right. They didn't want to, so Ike just said, why do I think the big ones want to do option three? It's because they would rather take the debt to pay for rider twenty-twenty-four and reduce this year what the rate's gonna look like. Because, you know, they're giving you a plan for twenty-twenty-six. We're twelve months away from having that discussion, so.
What do you think, if you sit on that committee, what do you think would help Benson the most as far as what we went with, uh, as a group?
I mean, the more I look at it and the more I delve into this, because like going into Wednesday, like I had it fully read through the materials, so it was, we were all just kind of like shell-shocked a little bit. Um, the more I read through it, I do think option three probably is the better option at this point. It is less overall. We are using that debt to help pay for some of the riders within hopes that. We are using that debt to help pay for some of the riders in hopes that the rider would not have to be that much. Um, and honestly, I, I think option three's gonna win. So my vote either way is not really gonna matter, I don't think. But I do feel like option three is probably the better option in the long run. That's if it stays like it is and, and I hope that, which I, I mean, you know, I hope that we, in 2026, we can take all these bottomed, these second numbers that they gave us and reduce them. Like I hope we don't have to get to that point, but like I said, we're, we're months out from that conversation. Now I can tell you on a rate committee side and on a commission side, we have not been quiet in regards to these true ups. Several times we have told them, you know, they've gotta get closer to the number in their true ups. This is ridiculous. We can't go 12 months out and get a $40 million deficit and have to pay it. It's not fair to our constituents, it's not fair to us, Duke's gotta figure out a different way. Um, Duke and, and you probably know more about this than I do, but Duke is about to do another merger with Florida something?
They already done?
They've already done, they were talking about some sort of merger that was, was coming and maybe we could renegotiate some, some contracts?
It's the merger between Duke Energy and Progress and Duke Energy Carolina. It's the old Duke Energy and Progress Energy, they're gonna, cause they gotta keep them separate right now. They're gonna merge them together, cause Carolina's, uh, Carolina's, uh, well, Carolina. Duke Energy originally was out West, they can do power cheaper than Progress does. That's reasonable.
So there is a little bit of, there was a little bit of conversation about, there may be a possibility that we can, during that merger, we can renegotiate our contract, which created this whole true up in 2015. Um, but I, I don't know how much leverage we're gonna have at that point. I think they have, when is all that happening, like?
2027.
Oh, so we've got a little while anyway, so. Um, and, and listen, I, I tell y'all every, this is an open meeting. If y'all want to join me in Wilson, y'all are more than wel, I, I mean, if, if you don't have anything else, like meeting starts at 10. Um, y'all are more than welcome to join. You can't, I mean, I'll introduce you, you really, you can ask questions, but you, you don't. Um, but you can hear all the stuff that we hear. I mean, I send y'all the presentations, but a lot of times, I mean, even for me, sometimes I'm reading this and I'm like, what? I have to go to Roy and say, break this out, so, um.
And our contract in Electric Cities was 2025.
Yes. And, and listen, which, I, I've done the same thing you've done, I've talked to other people. I mean, it's just right now, it's just not, we, there's no way we can get out of it.
Well, you never find out anything. I mean, everything's hearsay, well, why don't y'all do this, why don't y'all do that? But when you sit down with the people that can make those decisions and they have asked the same thing and they were told, no, that legally, you can't do that if you want a big lawsuit on your hand that you can't win. You try to do something like us teaming up with, uh, South River and say, we want to be a park and y'all take over air stuff, it can't happen. Yeah, we're, we're stuck, not until, that's right, unless they come up with another fix.
And that's the thing, if there's a renegotiation of contract and that starts, I'm gonna say, I'll, you know, I, 2025, I was not doing the commission, I was finance, but like, y'all need to be more involved in that and know that is and out is what we're setting up for, for sure. So is option three?
That's good with me, option three.
I'd love to take the $118,000 off of it.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to pay.
Put on the, the tax revenue.
Alright, so, um, I will let you guys know how the meeting goes. I'll do like I did this last time, um, make notes in the PowerPoint and send it to you in an email. And I, and you know, if you ever have any questions, just let me know.
And that's it, I think, let's hang up. No, if y'all hear a motion, you can do it.
I'm ready.